It's just rolled over seven o'clock.
Fifteen residents.
That's what I think. We're good to go. Let's go ahead and get rolling with this. Mr. Van Bogaert.
She can pitch.
All right, it is now 7:00 PM, and I will call to order the regularly scheduled meeting of the Beloit City Council. It is Monday, November 4th, 2013, at 100 State Street, Beloit, Wisconsin. Roll call.
Roll call shows all councilors present except for Councillor De Forest.
Number two is pledge of allegiance. Will you all please stand?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Items number three and four, we have none today. Item number five is citizens' participation. I do have one sign-up sheet from Elizabeth Wiederholt. If you please approach the podium, give your name and address. You'll have three minutes to speak your mind to us.
My name is Elizabeth Wiederholt. My address is 2700 East Ridge Road, and I'm here tonight asking for a turn signal to be put on Shoapier Road, the intersection of Cranston Road, because you come down Shoapier Road, and sometimes I've had to wait three times to get through the light to turn left on Cranston Road, because I'm coming from the hospital. There's a turn lane there, you know, we just need the light. And I think with Casey's coming in there, you know, they say there was 50,000 cars that travel through that intersection, or probably more than that. So I think it would be a good thing to put turn signal in there, left-hand. Either way, you're coming on Shoapier Road.
Sure. Thank you.
You're talking about a left turn arrow. The signals are already there.
Yeah, the signals, yeah.
On both directions of Shoapier?
Yes. The signals are there, you know, they just need to put the arrows so people could turn, and the lanes are there.
We will get back to you. We will, yes, the storage lanes are there. We'll take a look at that tomorrow. I've done that myself. I go off that way, but I'm not sure if we can do that with the heads and the signal controller and everything that's there now. That's older equipment. So we, let me check into it, and we'll let you know if it's possible.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, City Manager. Do we have any other persons wishing to come forward and speak under citizens' participation? Second call for persons to come forward and speak under citizens' participation. Third and final call for persons to come forward and speak under citizen participation. Hearing none, I'll close citizens' participation. I'll let Councillor De Forest get settled in. Oh, no, quite all right.
While we're doing that, is there a reason we're blue up there?
I don't know. It's quite fetching, isn't it?
Yeah, it's a little bit different. I tried to reset this when I came down. I set the computer up, and I set full tint color, and that didn't work. So then I thought maybe somebody had been playing with it. I set it back to the factory default setting, and that didn't work either. So I think there's something wrong with it.
Okay. All right, we'll move forward to the consent agenda. Number six, all items listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered at this point on the agenda. Does a council member wish anything removed from the consent agenda? Hearing none, the consent agenda consists of items 6A through 6E. Do I have a motion? Moved by Levy, second by Lukey. All in favor of the consent agenda, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Consent agenda passes 7-0. Item seven, ordinances, there are none. Appointments, there are none. So we'll move on to item nine, which is councillor activities and upcoming events. Councillor De Forest.
Thank you. I apologize for my tardiness. My son had a medical emergency today, so I was glad to make it back in time, and he's doing fine. I'm a little flustered, so I don't remember what I was going to share, but I apologize again for my tardiness and my attire.
Well, we're glad to hear that he's in good shape.
Thank you.
All right, councillor Van Bogaert.
A couple things, Mr. President. First, I had the opportunity and privilege last week of attending the Wisconsin League of Municipalities lobbying effort on Wednesday. I had a chance to meet with Representative Ringhands, also the representatives from Representative Loudonbeck and Senator Cullen, and met with Senator Kedzie in person, talking about items of interest to municipalities across the state. On a more personal note, I had the opportunity to find in my home an item that I want to share with councillor Lukey. I can't tell you what year it was, but somewhere in the 1980s, he and I, along with a number of other people, participated in a turkey swim at our local YMCA. For a nine-day, excuse me, 11-day period of time, we saw how far we could swim, and at the end, whoever won was going to get turkey. We got going, and I ended up in fourth place, swimming 45 miles in 11 days. And councillor Lukey was in third place, and he swam like two miles more than I did. He had a little bit more time off, and he was there in the pool. So I found my fourth-place ribbon from that event, and it's amazing to me that the citizens have consistently elected two guys that are that dumb.
Turkeys.
But turkeys, but we all got turkeys, but I'm going to give him my fourth-place ribbon.
Thank you very much.
Gobble, gobble.
I have nothing to report this evening.
And now councillor Lukey.
I'm all quacked out. I'm honored to receive this. Other than that, I'll just briefly say I'm just very pleased when I go through town and see the Phoenix Building and how beautiful it looks and how much it enhances downtown Beloit, and how proud I am of the city for its part and the partnership with Diane Hendrix in bringing this about. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councillor Spicer.
I had a great time last weekend getting to the last farmer's market of the season and seeing all the costumes, and also helping out with the pumpkin painting festival at the Porter Avenue and Nelson Avenue sharing gardens with community action in the neighborhood there. So I had a good time with Halloween, getting to some events.
Councillor Levy.
I have nothing.
Nothing.
Okay, and I'll have to say that I'm ready to move forward as well. So item 10 would be cities manager's presentation. There is not one, so we'll be moving on to the core of our agenda, the stuff that's going to take all of our time tonight. Item 11, reports from boards and city officers, 11A.
A resolution approving the 2014 annual action plan and community development block grant budget. Community Development Authority recommended approval 5 to 0.
Mrs. Christensen.
I gave a full presentation on the budget at your last meeting. It has not changed since then. The CDA did recommend 129,300 be awarded to the public service agencies, 133,600 to planning and program administrative activities, 115,000 for court enforcement, 125.7 for housing rehab, and we are estimating 500,000 at this point. And then that's on your item for action tonight, as well as this action plan. This is the fifth year. We did a five-year plan five years ago. This is the fifth year. It is really business as usual. There are no substantial changes to it. You know, it may have noticed there were a couple of things highlighted, and those were just items that we will update before we submit it to HUD. One was the waiting list numbers for public housing in Section 8, and the other was related to the action tonight. But otherwise, this five-year plan is really, this is just the fifth year of the five-year plan. It has not changed from the last several years. And the CDA did recommend approval of the budget as presented in your packet and this plan.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion for approval?
Move.
Moved by Van Bogaert.
Second.
Second by Levy. Councillor De Forest.
Thank you. I just had one question. Did the CDA have any discussion about any of the items in the action plan? I didn't have a chance to look at minutes, so I was wondering about that.
No, they really didn't discuss the plan itself. They discussed the budget, but not the plan.
Okay, so there were no concerns.
Because it was very business as usual. No, no concerns raised.
All right. Thank you.
Do we have any other questions or comments on item 11A? Calling in, I'll call the matter. All in favor of approving item 11A, please say yea. Aye. I'm having, it's an amazing thing tonight. Truly. I think I need cheesecake. You're quite correct. I should have had that sandwich earlier. All right, so, okay, so item passes 7-0. Item 11B.
A resolution approving the 2014 home investment partnership budget. The Community Development Authority recommended approval 5 to 0.
Mrs. Christensen.
Each year, as a consortium, Rock County, Janesville, and Beloit, all our awarded home funds, what we're anticipating receiving for '14 is $76,935 for city projects and $60,738 in community housing development organization funds for projects in Beloit for 2014. The CDA did recommend awarding the city pot to the city's housing rehab loan program, and to award the choo-to funds to a choo-to in Beloit in 2014 as we see projects come forward. They actually recommended it be awarded either to NHS or community action, but it would be for acquisition rehab projects.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve?
So move.
Moved by Levy, second by Lukey. Do we have any questions or comments on this portion of it? Councillor Forrest.
Aye. One question. Ms. Christensen, how will it be decided who the choo-to will be, whether it be NHS or community action?
We'll actually do a request for proposals.
Okay.
And then we'll take that to CDA for their recommendation.
Okay.
And it will actually come back here for final approval by council.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from councillors? Hearing none, I'll call the matter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Item passes 7-0. Now we'll move on to 11C.
A resolution approving the 2014 Business Improvement District operating plan and budget.
This is Al Amin.
You guys weren't able to hear my budget. The city manager and I have talked about that. Next year, we will be adding that to the workshop, so you guys can see the DBA budget ahead of time instead of just tonight and in your packet. But as a presentation, my chairperson is Peter Frank. He was not able to make it tonight. He had a family emergency. Some of the things that we've done in 2013, I did give you a printout of this as well, so you can see it more clearly. We did order seven new benches to be installed downtown with TIF funds last year. There's a new walk-through at the Strong Building, in between the Strong Building and the Cash Store, which they decided to do. We donated another bench to that. That was our contribution. The Phoenix Project, as Mr. Lukey said, is almost complete. We had businesses relocating. Type 8 images used to be inside of Chester Square. They decided they wanted a storefront on State Street. Annabel's, at the same time, decided they wanted to be on Grand, so kind of worked out perfectly. We did have to move our Fridays in the Park to Gantry this year, because First National Bank is doing a lot of reconstruction over there. But it was a huge success. It was a lot of, it was a huge open area, so it was nice to use that stage that we kind of underutilized since it was built. So we were trying to find creative ways to do that. We did a huge kickoff event with, at the Fridays in the Park, the very first one, with Visit Beloit and B103, the radio station out of Rockford. That was definitely a huge kickoff for us. We also added new farmer's market bags for just $5. We're selling those at farmer's market, and they are recycled bags, so you can reuse them every week. We did some fundraising events. We actually did two. We did one at Culvers and one at Papa Murphy's, and we're considering doing one at Applebee's next year. And that's just to raise funds for our hanging basket program. That's not really something that we get a lot of sponsors for, like most of our events. It's kind of undersponsored. So we were trying to find creative ways to come up with money. We started Social Media Mondays, which is any downtown business that wants help with social media can meet one-on-one with myself. And we did have a social media intern over the summer that we were able to utilize from Beloit College, so we are still doing that. We installed four little free libraries throughout downtown, and we have two more coming. One is done being built. It's just got to be decorated. And the other one, the business owner, Breton Motors, decided they wanted to build it themselves and make it look like a car, obviously. So that one's being done, too. We got new planters installed all over downtown, and our water wagon was updated. Breton Motors took it, and can't really see it in the picture, but it added a logo and everything onto it, so it looks really nice. Some of the goals that we want to do this year, definitely improving the board and committee member participation, connecting more to businesses, finding out what they need. I've now been in this position for almost a year and a half, and it does take a while for business owners to come into comfort levels with you, to really start opening up and telling you what they want. So we're definitely going to still do that. We try to add to every single event. So even with the Halloween parade and party, thanks for coming down there, we just try to add more stuff, some more kids' activities, more free activities for family. And we did have very low-cost activities, which was the Fun Zone, that we added even more to this year than last year. We are continuing to add sponsors to every event. Like I said, though, the hanging basket program is very undersponsored, so we're still being creative, trying to find ways to fund that program. We are continually updating our website. We last year added the farmer's market database on there. Now, if you want to find a farmer's market vendor who has approved for us to put them on our website, you can actually search right there and actually contact them directly, so when it's not in season, you can reach them. And we're improving, extending our marketing efforts. We were more localized with our marketing, and now we're trying to regionalize our marketing, and we've been doing that now for about six months. It's going pretty good with our events. One thing in your packet that I submitted was a potential to add to the downtown district. For whatever reason, when the map was done in 1988, I'm not exactly sure why, but the Ironworks campus themselves were left out of the map. And talking to the folks at the Hendrix, they wanted the Ironworks campus to be added, because they have so many different businesses going in there. They want all of them to be able to get our benefits, which is basically being part of our organization, being part of the downtown, that community. So instead of them each paying $100 a year to be an associate member, they wanted the full benefit. So we did agree to add them to that. And then it would also be to the north, it would be Southeastern Container, or, I'm sorry, American Aluminum Excursion and stainless tanking equipment, both. So we would actually go all the way up to Barrett Place, which most people don't know that street, but it's the street that Welder Supply is on. We have updated our work plan. As you can see here, just one of the events that we do is Grand Lighted Holiday Parade. It's coming up, day after Thanksgiving. So we do have a work plan for every single one of our events, and we do coordinate that with the community, the different community members that we have on our committee themselves, the Promotions Committee, and then staff. We also work with the Engineering Department to close streets, that kind of thing. So that's all outlined in our work plan. Then for our budget, we do have revenue that we're hoping to get for 2014 to 2026. Estimated carryover from 2013, 171; total income, 398. And then you can see our different committees that we have, four different committees, and each one is outlined there with what the expenses would be. And that's it. Any questions?
I was concerned about the carryover, why there was so much carryover.
The carryover is actually, we're working on a policy right now to set a specific amount or percentage to that. When I first started, I asked the same question, what would carryover really do for us? Basically, what it does is if our income that we receive from the city were ever to decrease, that way we would have money set aside for that. And also, if any of our events were reined out, we would have money set aside. We don't get the actual assessment from the city until January, February of the following year. So having money in our account where we can go business as usual until we get that lump sum. I mean, that is a huge lump, but we don't get it until the next year.
Thank you.
Councillor De Forest.
Thank you. Did you receive the questions I was able to email you? Okay. So, related to the carryover question that I had asked, and I think I heard you say that your board is going to work on a policy for that, so I'm glad to hear it, because I was concerned, too, about the amount and what the plan is for how much is a healthy amount to keep in reserves, and the determination of that, for what reasons. Could you describe the income generated by Celebrate Downtown that was mentioned in your report?
Sure, that's our street dance, and we get roughly $20,000 from the beer and merchandise sales, and then about $16,000 was from gate tickets, so just admissions. And then the rest was actually from sponsors, food vendors, that kind of thing.
Great, so it's a good moneymaker for the association.
It is our only fundraiser, really, that we do throughout the year.
Okay, great. And then, under expenses, could you just share a little bit more details with us about the clean sweep salaries that were mentioned?
Sure. I actually have a technically full-time employee during the summer. He's full-time for 22 weeks out of the year. And then I have a part-time person who covers two to three days a week throughout the whole summer. That's watering our plants, doing downtown maintenance, making sure the sidewalks are clean, making sure there's garbage picked up.
Great. And then, could you describe what's included in marketing assistance that's separate from the promotion money that's been set aside?
I didn't know if you were referring to 2013 and past or 2014, so I'll kind of explain a little bit. But historically, that money was put aside to pay for any marketing that we needed. So if we needed somebody to design our ads, design our posters, that kind of thing. For 2014, though, the $10,000 is actually for a joint marketing project we're working on right now with Visit Beloit, GBADC, and The Chamber jointly, to have a marketing person working for all four agencies.
Oh, that's great. Great collaboration. Okay, and then some of the hard general questions. That's why I sent them to you ahead of time, so I wouldn't put you on the spot. Have you received any feedback from the downtown businesses at all that the assessments presented a hardship to them?
No.
Okay.
And we're not raising it, and it hasn't been raised for long time.
Right, I was glad to see that. Good. And the favorite question, I'm sure, and I think some of my colleagues have also received calls about this and emails. Has the board reviewed the issue of allowing dogs at farmer's markets? If so, where is that discussion at, or what's the plans?
We have, and we've surveyed a lot of people. We've taken in the calls that we've gotten that were negative, and the calls that we've gotten that are positive. Janesville actually did cut out dogs at their farmer's market, and now their farmer's market is not very well attended at all by owners of dogs and non-dog owners, who think that it's wrong to prohibit dogs at the farmer's market. And because of that, they have a lot of vendors who are no longer selling at the Janesville Market. They've backed out. They just don't have the people. We have ordered for 4,500 people every single Saturday, and if you have a handful that are complaining and a handful that are happy, you know, it was really hard for us to weigh that decision, but we decided not to instill that policy.
Okay. And then, could you please share with us any discussion or plans? I heard specifically from some of the local downtown businesses that they would like to see the farmer's market vendors facing their doors, because I know part of the goal of the farmer's market is to help promote the businesses that are already downtown. So I heard from quite a few of them, they'd like to see the farmer's market face the sidewalks and face the business doors, so the traffic isn't going down the middle of the street. They don't even see the downtown businesses. Where is that discussion at?
We worked it out with the city manager, with engineering, and it was not feasible. We did present it to the farmer's market vendors. They agreed it wasn't feasible. There's not enough room, if you turn them around, for the farmer's market vendors to keep their allotted space and also have enough room for traffic flow on both sides, then. If you do go on the State Street side where they do face the businesses, right now, it's very congested, and that's what would happen. And that actually does upset the patrons, but because those vendors have been doing it since the beginning of time, they're not going to change that, and we don't plan to change that. But it is very congested over there. It's not user-friendly. It's not walkable. You cannot have a stroller over there. It's very hard to do. We did actually test it out during the pre-sale in May, which, as you know, is a lot smaller. There's not as many vendors, and it was not feasible.
So even if you had the vendors in the middle of the street, back to back?
Then they don't have enough room for their vehicles. They usually all have very large trucks and trailers that they have to have all their merchandise down there.
Okay.
And it's not easy for them to unload all of that at 6:00 in the morning, just to get their truck and trailer out of the way. And then how do they manage to get their truck and trailer back on the street to fill it back up at the end of the day? It wasn't working.
Okay. Were you able to share these results with the downtown businesses, so they understand why the decision was made?
Yes.
Okay, great.
And a lot of the downtown merchants are actually farmer's market vendors as well.
Right.
So it kind of helps that they saw it firsthand for themselves that it wasn't going to work.
Right. If a downtown business would like to have a booth or a spot at the farmer's market, do they get first dibs?
No, they do not. We actually take the vendors who have been there the longest. They have first dibs. But if there is a spot open, then they could pay the fee, and they could be out there as well.
Great. All right, thank you very much for all my questions. I appreciate it.
Councillor Kincaid.
Thank you for your presentation. You do a lot more than I. I know you're very, very busy, but there are more items that you're involved with. For example, the little free library. I'm glad that you have a part in that, and I want, can we sign up for a little free library?
[laughing]
Or do we have to make one?
Well, I actually had my employee, Larry Simpson, made all of mine for me, and so we did pay him to make them.
Very nice.
Thank you. And then we did let the businesses detail them however they wanted, so that's why there's, everyone is a little unique.
Right, and there is an organization that handles that and certifies them, and I can get you in touch with that organization if you desire.
They'll actually build one for you for $400.
Well, that's a deal.
[laughing]
For somebody. One other, the farmer's market is clearly the best thing that's happening downtown, in my view. I would hope that the issues and concerns of dogs in the market will not be dropped. I get rave reviews about the farmer's market, and many unsolicited, but many comments about where dogs should and should not be. So I know it's a difficult issue, but there are many people who volunteer how they feel about it, to me.
I get them, too.
I don't think, and I might add, that I think that the reasons Janesville failed with the farmer's market have a lot to do with a lot more things than whether or not there are pet dogs there, in my opinion. Thank you.
Councillor Van Bogaert.
Can you explain to us the mechanics of the expansion of the Business Improvement District and how that will affect revenues? Is this going to come in as one piece and one assessment, or is it going to be individually assessed to the various businesses there? Or how will that work? And then what benefits will accrue to the various businesses that are there?
Well, to start that, each parcel over there is assessed at its own taxes. So each parcel, the maximum you can get per parcel is $3,000 to the bid. So that is actually six parcels. So our estimated figure for 2015 income, which is based on the 2014 assessment, is going to be $6,600 added to the bid. Extra for us, I guess that's just extra income for us, which is a great thing, and that's what we're trying to do, is generate income. But the benefits they get is actually being, they get all of our services. They can apply for sign grants. They can apply for facade grants. They can get anything from us. They can get our Social Media Mondays. That's just downtown businesses. They can get our design work that we do with the state, anything and everything we offer, which is all of our committees, they would benefit from.
All right. When you say "they," would it be the property owner of each individual parcel, or any of the smaller subdivided tenants are going to get the benefit?
All the tenants would get the benefits. The property owner is all the same. The property owner is Hendrix Development for all three, well, six parcels. And they see the benefit passed on to their businesses, and then each business gets those benefits.
Okay. In some communities, the existence of an improvement district is a contentious issue. Is the expansion of ours a contentious issue to anyone or by anyone? Not that I've heard, but...
Not that I'm aware of, no. Talking to all the bid experts out there, it's very easy to add parcels. It's definitely horribly hard to take away parcels. horribly hard to take away parcels. But we are adding an exact square block and that's how you have to add them. And Hendrick's understood that, that's why we're getting six parcels added in there.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Counselor Spritzer.
Can you give us an update on how things worked out this year at the farmer's market now that we're accepting SNAP benefits?
It went very well. We actually decided to eat the costs involved in that and not pass that on to the vendors. We wanted to see how it would go. We actually sold over $3,000 in SNAP. We haven't gotten quite all of those back. But in those who don't know, SNAP is actually the food stamp program. We decided to buy an electronic device where we could take the cards and then in return we would give them wooden tokens. Wooden tokens go to the vendors who are approved to sell food, because it's only good for food. And then they turn them in at the end of every Saturday to us and then we pay them back exactly what they gave us. So all the batch fees, all the transaction fees, we actually were eating those. And then we actually did apply to UW Extension to get reimbursed for the machine itself. They had a grant program, so we were able to take advantage of that. So very well, we'll continue to do it.
Great.
Counselor Lübke.
Just to reiterate on the dogs thing again, I agree with Councilman Charles Benedict that Janesville failed probably because they just didn't have a program anywhere near as good as Beloit's. I think after Madison, Beloit's number two in the state, if I'm not wrong. We have a wonderful program, farmer's market. You mentioned a tally. What was your tally results as far as pro and con for dogs?
I don't have the number with me, I didn't bring that with me, but it was definitely more pro than it was con and a lot of people said they didn't, it didn't matter one way or the other.
I called you a few times this summer because I received 15 calls negative. Now, I talked to a number of people with dogs, many friends of mine who had dogs and who bring them down and whose dogs were well-trained and who were not prone to be fighting or whatever. One of my big concerns is that Madison, Rockford, and Janesville all ban dogs for a reason. My concern is liability with the city in case somebody's being pushed in a cart, a child, and the child happens to pull the tail of a dog or whatever and there's a bite or whatever. It's a liability issue there. So I just, it's as long as you're aware of that and have talked about that. But I'd like to see your tally sometime as to what types of calls you've gotten on that.
Sure. And we're actually going to do another community survey probably at the beginning, right before May, as people are starting to think farmer's market again, do another survey.
Thank you.
Counselor Levy.
A quick follow-up to that, are you surveying community members as a whole or are you surveying individuals that attend the farmer's market?
Community members as a whole. We actually do have a separate Facebook page strictly for farmer's market, so we're going to use that as our venue to survey.
Okay. Because I wonder if you would get a different result from individuals that actually attend the farmer's market versus the community. Because if I don't go, I wouldn't have an opinion either way, but if I'm down there every Saturday, it might have, I might have a different opinion on when I see the dogs down there. Because as Counselor DeForest said, I know I've received and I've shared it with you a couple of phone calls about people concerned about the same thing. So I think I'd be interested to see if there was a survey done at farmer's market or something from the individuals that's down there to get their take on it.
Yeah, we're definitely going to probably hand out like business cards with the survey link on it and stuff like that at farmer's market as we get it going. But if we could do a pre-survey before farmer's market and then we can continue it for a while and keep adding up the numbers and see what they come up with. I mean, there'll be more questions than just dogs.
Okay, thank you.
All right, do we have any more questions or comments? Counselor DeForest.
I should have said this when I asked all my questions, but thank you for the excellent work you're doing. So proud of our farmer's market. I got down there several times towards the end of the summer, once my son was home and every time I go, it's wonderful to see the community come out together. I'm so thrilled that we have SNAP accepted now, so everybody in the community can go and feel welcome there and purchase food from our vendors and participate. So I wanted to thank you for that. I'm really glad to hear that you're planning to pass out cards with the survey link on it so that people that are there can participate in that. So thank you for taking that initiative.
No problem, thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Second.
Moved by Van de Boger, second by Levy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes 7-0. Thank you. We'll move on to item 11D.
A resolution authorizing changes to the 2014 schedule of fees, charges, and rates for the city of Beloit, Wisconsin.
Mr. Yarke. Good evening. As you know, as part of our annual budget process, all of our departments review the fees that are charged for various services that the city provides. And generally, these are typically inflationary-type increases to our schedule of fees and also to reflect the ever-rising cost of providing certain services that are fee-based. And this resolution is recommending increases in fees that the city charges for its ambulance services that are provided by the fire department, which again is a enterprise operation of the city and those fees are used to cover the cost of those services. We're also suggesting changes to our golf course fees for next year. And again, our golf course is operated as a fee-based operation and these fees are used to cover the cost of services at the golf course. We also have some recreation fees that are being recommended for change. There's actually one that's recommended for a decrease and then there's a new recreation fee that's being proposed for next year. And one new fee that came up during the budget process are the inspection fees or reinfection fees, I should say, for some of the code enforcement operations that the city has. These fees are going to be charged in the event there's violations that aren't being repaired or taken care of by the property owners and the city has to re-inspect those properties to ensure that the code violations are taken care of. We're proposing that there be an additional charge for those rein inspections. This was an item that was discussed at the public hearing a couple of weeks ago and I believe our code enforcement department has addressed the concerns that one of the individuals had that spoke at the last council meeting regarding that. And there's also a slight increase in our building permit fees next year to cover the cost of the Wisconsin state stamp fee that's going up for 2014. And that's basically the proposed fees to be changed for 2014 in our budget. And with that, if you have any specific questions, I'll be glad to try to address those.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Moved by Lübke.
Second.
Second by Spritzer. Counselor DeForest.
Thank you. I have concerns about the second reinfection fee that is proposed for an inoperable smoke detector, carbon monoxide detector. I would prefer that...it makes sense to me and all of the landlords that I've spoken with seem to understand that a third reinfection fee makes sense because violations were notified and the landlord has an attempt then to address it. And so then it makes sense to not make an inspector have to go out more than a second time to take a look at those. But I know, especially because I'm not sure if all of the bugs have been worked out with inspectors coming at the scheduled time, that a landlord cannot always get there right before the inspector's there to make sure that the tenant has removed the battery from the smoke detector, the carbon monoxide detector. I understand this is a safety issue, but I guess I'm really struggling with the fee for a second inspection for that violation. Because I know a very thoughtful landlord could have it operable, but the tenant could remove the battery, you know, that morning before the inspection. So I would like to make a motion to remove the fee ascribed to a second reinfection and would look for a motion from my colleagues to second that.
Do we have a second?
Could I have a question instead? Clarification?
A clarification, sure.
The inspector comes by for the first inspection.
And there's a violation, there's no charge for that. When he or she comes back to re-inspect, there is a charge. I see Mr. Forrest's point. The landlord could be punished for something that he or she had no control over. That could happen with every subsequent inspection also.
Well, is it...okay, so do you wish to...I'd rather have a second if we're going to get into any further discussions on this.
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a second for that amendment. Do you have any other things that you wanted to add to that?
Just...
Okay, and Counselor Levy.
And I guess I disagree with that. I understand that the tenants could take the battery out or whatever before the inspector comes or whatever, but ultimately to me, that falls back on the landlord as a landlord's responsibility of saying, you know what, you don't understand, if that battery's not in there when I come, I'm going to get the citation. So maybe they need to put something in there, at least, as they're saying, if I get these citations, we're going to pass them on to you. Because, not saying it could happen or it will happen, but it could, that the landlord could always use that as an excuse. It was in there, but all of a sudden, before you got there, the battery was taken out or something and I had, I had no idea about it. So I think we should leave it in there and I put the owners back on the landlords. And if they have responsible tenants, then I think, you know, it falls back on them. That's just my opinion. They could charge it and say, you know, if we get an inspection and if I get cited because the battery has been taken out of this smoke detector, that's going to go to you. If I have to pay it, I'm going to pass that cost on to you. Because I don't want us to get into an area of where that could become an excuse as to what happened so I don't have to pay the citation. But if we pass it on to the tenant, it becomes the landlord's responsibility and the tenant's responsibility.
Counselor Spritzer.
I certainly sympathize with the specific issue of if inspectors are coming early for an inspection. I know this is something that Ms. Christensen and I exchanged some emails on. Ms. Christensen, could I ask you a question on this one? I understand from your response to my email about that, that, you know, sometimes somebody finishes up at another place and ends up getting there early and starting the inspection, but they make sure that they don't leave until the landlord arrives if they know that they're planning to come. Would it be fair to have a policy dealing with this if we do have this fee that if the landlord arrives before the scheduled start time of the inspection and is checking something like a detector and puts a battery in it, that as long as the battery's in it by the start time of the inspection, that they would not be charged this fee because the inspector happened to show up early?
Yeah, I'm sure we can do that.
If we can have that as a matter of policy, then I would feel more comfortable keeping this as is. But, you know, I do agree that if people can't count on that and, you know, we should give opportunity to show up ahead of time and make sure everything is straightened out.
Yeah, I'm agreeable to that.
Thank you.
Okay, yes, as long as they can make a spot correction, because that's usually if a new fresh battery's in it and it works before our people leave, then I think that's fine too myself. Counselor Kincaid.
It's a health-safety issue. Thank you.
No, you're on.
I think you're on.
You're on.
It's a health-safety issue and I think we've come up with one helpful solution, not a solution, but at least something to mitigate the problem. And it's the cost of doing business and I think we've come up with a suggestion about how that might be handled. But overall, it is a question of whether our tenants are responsible enough or not. We need to do the best we can with respect to health and safety.
Counselor DeForest.
I am glad to hear, Ms. Christensen, that there's a willingness to give the landlord the opportunity to rectify the situation, you know, if they're there for the inspection. I guess I just, I want to point out to my colleagues that, you know, we're talking about this is the first inspection, they don't know the tenant's been taking the batteries out and so it's an opportunity for the landlord to educate the tenant and really reinforce. I know the landlords in general do a good job of explaining these rules at the beginning of the time that their tenants move in, but if some time has passed, then it might not be fresh in their minds. But, you know, again, I understand the safety concerns, but I'm more concerned about education and opportunity to educate rather than the penalizing of a landlord. So I'll just close with those comments. Thank you.
Counselor Lübke.
Quick summary, I think Councilman Levy had a good solution and that is if the landlord educates the tenant and tells them about the importance of the smoke detector when the renting is carried out, if it's the landlord who's at fault and who never put it in, then of course he or she should bear the 50 bucks. But if the tenant takes it out, then of course, as Councilman Levy said, that could be assessed to the tenant. So I think we have a solution. Thank you.
Sheila, did you have something else that you wanted to add?
I have something new. I just want... My own.
Yes, your own.
I just want to be sure to clarify because this issue actually speaks to a larger issue that I know the landlords have spoken about, is that we have some rules, some ordinances, violations that are, and many times tenant behaviors that we turn around and penalize the landlords for, where the tenant does something on their property and the assessed fee or fine goes to the landlord. And so whereas, you know, in this case, I don't think the city's going to bill the tenants, I think the city's going to bill the landlord. And so once again, we have a situation where if we have bad tenant behavior, the landlord's being punished, you know, the landlord can assess it to and add it to the rent, but they're not always going to see that. So I just want to make sure that point is clear because this issue's come up a couple of times where we think that tenants will be assessed for tenant-related behavior violations, but they're not. Thank you.
I think I'd point out at this point that we already have an agreement with Ms. Christensen that if a landlord is prepared to make a spot correction on this on the first inspection, he won't need a second inspection. So that's, I mean, a little bit of preparedness on the part of the property owner may go a long way.
And I would argue that they can do their education a month before the inspection on the importance of it. They don't have to wait for an order from us. I mean, they have an opportunity, unless this is a brand-new tenant that just moved in today, they have an opportunity prior to the inspection to do that education. And we are working on developing a checklist by the end of the year for them that would go out before, you know, with that inspection notice, which would outline everything. So we are...I just actually talked to Terry about that this afternoon.
Counselor Levy.
No, I agree with what Ms. Christensen just said, that when we get ready to rent a place, then that's an opportunity to do some education by saying, this is everything that you're responsible for, understanding that this is what the rules and regulations are, we need to make sure that you're following them. I still believe that the owner's fault's on the landlord to make sure that we are renting to responsible people. And, okay, yeah, the cost goes to the landlord, but that comes down to them of renting to responsible people. I think as a homeowner, if I have something wrong with my house, they're going to send it to me. They're not going to send a bill to the city because I live in the city. They're going to send it to me as a homeowner, so I think it's my responsibility to make sure that I'm meeting all the codes. I'm feeling that same way with the landlord, that if you have property in the city and you're renting it, that you need to make sure you're renting to responsible people to make sure that you're not getting these costs. And if you get these costs, then pass it on to them and make them responsible. I mean, I was a renter before too and you better believe that if I'd done anything in that apartment that the owner didn't like, then it was assessed to me. You become responsible that way. But I think we can't just say because the landlords are renting... renting and they're not responsible for their tenants, everything shouldn't go to them. We know right now that tenants could up and leave a landlord right now, so if we send the bill to the tenant, we may not get it. So it needs to go to the property owner or the landlord. They need to hire, they need to move in responsible people. That's just my personal belief.
Okay. Do we have anything new that we would, to bring up about this particular amendment?
Get the question.
I think it's time. All in favor of Counselor DeForest's amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Aye. Item is defeated by a vote of 1 to 6. Do we have any other additional discussions about the underlying matter? All right, then I'll call the underlying matter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes 7-0. We are now on to 11E.
A resolution approving the operating budgets, appropriating funds and levying property tax as necessary for the operation and administration of the city of Beloit for the year 2014, including the 2014 capital improvement budget, the Beloit Public Library budget, and further authorizing the city treasurer to spread the city property tax along with the apportionments certified for other jurisdictions upon the current tax rule of the city.
And, Mr. President, I'm going to handle that presentation, if I may.
Sure.
Obviously, we've spent a great deal of time on the budget, as you know. This process began last May with strategic planning, we did a pre-budget workshop, all of the staff, all of the line departments and divisions, worked on this document throughout the summer and early fall. It was presented to council at the first meeting in October. The following week, we held a full-day workshop. Last Monday, or two Mondays ago, we had a formal public hearing. I just want to reiterate a few of the high points in the budget again tonight, as council considers this for adoption. First of all, the total budget is just over $91 million, that's an increase of about $406,000, or 0.45% from the 2013 final or revised budget. Again, that's less than one-half of 1% increase. The general fund is 30.9 million, it went up about $330,000, or just over 1% from the 2013 budget. Our enterprise funds total are up about $102,000, or 0.56%, which is just slightly over a half a percent. The total operating budget, which includes not only that general fund and those enterprise funds, but also our debt service and special revenue funds, totaled $70,430,000, and of course, I'm rounding off these numbers, and is up about $636,000, which is 0.91% or less than a 1% increase. Finally, our aggregate capital budgets are at $8.7 million, which is actually a decrease of $206,000, or a minus 2.3% below the 2013 final budget. Once again, the total of all the budgets is up $406,000, or slightly less than one-half of 1%. I did want to point out that, as noted in the title, this particular resolution adopts the city's operating budget, which includes all of our governmental fund types, our enterprise funds, including the library, and all capital budgets, also extends and authorizes the tax levy to be billed to property owners within the corporate limits of the city, and the final enacting language provides for continued implementation of the city's new salary plan, including a 1% adjustment in salary ranges to take effect on January the 1st of 2014, and that will result in a 1% salary increase for all non-represented city employees. Cost of living this year is about 1.5%, but the pay plan is new, we made some adjustments to it at the time of implementation earlier this year, and so we're in a good place with our compensation plan. I also wanted to point out that there are other increases that many of those employees will be eligible for this year due to the merit, the longevity increases, and again, people below the midpoint in their plan are eligible for an adjustment, so there will be, not for every employee, but many will be receiving some additional adjustments as a result of the structure of the pay plan. So I want to be sure we pointed that out this evening as well. And that pretty much summarizes the budget, and I think concludes my comments. If there are any questions from any of the city councilors, I'll be happy to answer those.
Do we have a motion to approve? Do you have this rolling?
Motion to approve, second.
Moved by Lubke, second by Vanda Bogart. Counselor DeForest.
Thank you. I have a question that unfortunately I didn't think of at the time of our day-long budget workshop, I know it's hard to believe considering the amount of questions I asked my colleagues, but I guess I realize I might have made a false assumption, because the employees at the library are under a separate entity, are they also included in the merit pay system that the city has proposed, or are they being handled separately?
They are handled separately by the library, they're under control of the library board, which oversees and sets policy for the library and for all of its employees. Do you know, Paul, off the top of your head, if they participate in the merit pot?
Nate, maybe you can answer that question.
Nate is here. Excuse me, good.
How about it?
Yeah, yeah.
How perfect.
Great timing, thanks, you can answer the question.
You must have read my mind.
Sure. Okay.
The library has a separate pay plan, it's similar to, it's based off of what the city does, but it is separate, and we do, in our budget, we have increases for a number of our employees to get to the midpoint for the 2014 budget.
Okay, good, I wanted to make sure of that. Thank you.
Yep.
Counselor Vanda Bogart.
I just wanted to reiterate the point that Manager Arf made, that we're about to vote here on a $91 million budget, and it seems perhaps that there's been a minimum amount of discussion or consideration tonight, and that's true, but this is the culmination of literally hours and weeks of work by staff people, council review at strategic plan and all-day budget workshops, where many, many of these details were discussed and perhaps modified, and policy decisions were made. So while it seems that there is a de minimis amount of discussion now, this is simply the tip of the iceberg that's occurred, people should understand that.
Good, thank you. And I would mention and argue that that's the way it ought to be, where we've spent a huge amount of time, and by the time we get to this final point, we've hammered it out to a very fine, sharp edge. Do we have any other questions or comments from councilors? All right then, we'll go ahead and call the matter. All in favor of adoption of the budget, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Item passes 7-0. So the last thing that remains is item 12.
So moved.
Moved by Levy, second by DeForest. All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Good job.
Here we go.